All right, guys. I now call the November 4th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. This evening, our invocation is going to be given by Kat Calvary Chapel of Northern Kentucky's Pastor, Brian Evans. Thank you so much for being here, Brian.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. If you would, please pray with me. Our Lord and God, your grace is so amazing, and we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, in the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ, especially in this month when we celebrate in thanksgiving for all that you provide. Thank you for your great provision. Thank you for a great place to live and for this privilege of gathering in self-government and recognizing the responsibilities and the freedoms that it carries. We ask you, Lord, that our city officials be protective of the very precious and expensive rights that have been guarded by brave men and women, that they take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve without their own personal agendas or pursuits. We ask that they be women of men and women of virtue and integrity and with a heart of humble service. We pray for wisdom for Mayor Fetty, for our city administrator, Mr. Collier, and for this assembled council, and we thank you for their service, so we ask that you grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens. We ask that you give them a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. We ask that you hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for Chiefs Creator in God's name and all our first responders. We thank you for them as well. We ask that you keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families. Father, grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task, and we pray for the agenda set before them today, and please make clear to them what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger. We ask, God, I pray this over them that they remember, as your word says, trust the Lord and do not lean on your own understanding. In all your ways, acknowledge him, and he will make your path straight. So let us not arrogantly think that we will do this or that in the coming year, but only as you will it, and so we ask these things in the most blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much, Brian. All right, I'll ask that you rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Mr. Cahill. Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Ms. Fields.
Here.
Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Ms. Rakers.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Thank you so much. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes of the October 7th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Nicely, Ms. Rakers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we remove item number two under legislation. After thinking about this more, I believe that we do need to have our own public hearing on this matter, as Councilman Hermes suggested during our caucus meeting. I realize that the Planning Commission already had a public hearing, but nothing has been discussed about how this impacts our local school districts. It's my understanding that this development is in the Erlanger-Elsmer School District, and being that it's very small, being that it is a very small district, I think we need to give them some consideration in this decision.
I have a motion on the floor to remove an item. Is there a second? Ms. Nicely? Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hermes.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore. Mr. Farmer.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rakers.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Fields.
Motion fails for a lack of majority. Any other amendments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, our special presentation, and number one is our business spotlight, Tuis Poultry. I'm going to send it over to Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mayor. We are trying to be a little bit newsworthy, and with our business spotlight that we are characterizing this evening, we thought no better business in the city of Erlanger than Tuis Poultry Farms. We would very much appreciate everybody in this room, everybody watching, to get their turkeys this Thanksgiving from Tuis and here in Erlanger. Unfortunately, the newsworthiness has pulled the Tuises away from our council meeting tonight. They are having a family turkey meeting. I don't exactly know what that means, but they are not here, unfortunately, so we're going to share this video that we did for their spotlight right now, and this will be on our social media later this next week, right, Lauren?
This land became available over 80 years ago, and he took a dive and bought it, and We are a small farm. We only sell out of this store that you see behind me. My dad is the only formal employee. All of us come back to help. He has 16 brothers and sisters who are still living and chip in in different ways. He's now 73, so he's getting up there in terms of taking care of the farm, so us five children of his give back in different ways. We raise chickens here all year round. Turkeys, we get in the summertime as babies. That way, we control everything that goes into them, no hormones, none of that stuff, and then they will grow, and that will be what you eat at Thanksgiving or Christmas. So all of the turkeys are gone from here by January, and it's back to being a chicken When Grandpa built this land, even the expressway wasn't here back then, so this was really kind of the odds of Erlanger. And my siblings and I, we all grew up in Erlanger. Dad grew up in the house right here on the property, so Erlanger has been part of our world forever. I think the only reason that these places still exist is because we have customers who are loyal and keep coming back. If you want a turkey from Tuis Farm, we only have 3,000, so you're going to have to place an order online. Starting November 1st, we start taking orders, and you'll pick it up here just a couple of days before Thanksgiving. So we don't put preservatives of any sort. We don't freeze them. They're fresh, ready to go in the oven. Grandma's recipe is on our website, so you can just follow the Tuis plan. But yeah, you have to order ahead of time because we have to be prepared for who's coming and make sure that you get one.
Just a quick note, I think the thing that I love most about the business spotlights is that I get to learn so much about what's happening in our business community here in Erlanger. There's a lot that I got out of that business spotlight that I didn't know, and I think that's awesome, so just wanted to make that note.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Our next special presentation is our proclamation of Road Safety Week, which is going to go very nicely with our third presentation. All right, "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas the residents, business owners, and visitors throughout the city of Erlanger directly benefit from safe travel on Erlanger city streets and walkways. Various modes of transportation allow for all people to move freely throughout the city, including e-scooters, e-bikes, skateboards, and cars. Our community is dedicated to caring for the youth and all residents of our city. The city of Erlanger takes pride in ensuring the safety of our residents on our roads and walkways by working with local school districts and community organizations. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Fetty, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the week of November 2nd through the 8th, 2025, to be Road Safety Week in Erlanger, and do commend this observation to all of our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this day, November 4th, 2025." So I'm going to turn now the mic over to Lauren for our special presentation number three, our e-scooter presentation.
I'm going to bring a whole crew up with me here, so. Yes. All right, I want to thank everyone for your time tonight introducing our presentation. I know that e-scooter safety is very important within our city, and so we've been doing a lot of work. I've been here since September 2nd, so it's now a little over two months that I've been working on this project for building how we will adopt e-scooter safety, e-bike safety within our city. This work would not be possible without our community leaders and our school representatives that we have here today, along with our Department of Public Safety, specifically Sergeant Otten. He has been doing a great job working on this project from our Department of Public Safety side, collaborating with our general government, and then our Public Works team as well. I am going to turn the mic over here in just a second to Jessica Dykes, the Communications Director for Kenton County Schools, and then Chad Molly, the Superintendent of Erlanger-Elsmer Schools. Like I said, we do have the support of our schools here, that they will be speaking a little bit about the impact that this will make for students within our area. I do want to recognize Principal Grant Brannon and Mr. Billy Sarge from St. Henry. They could not be in attendance tonight, but they will be supporting us in their school efforts of how we will be reaching students, which is the primary demographic for our e-scooter targeting. Before I dive into the specifics of the plan, like I said, I would like to turn the mic over to Jessica and Chad so they can emphasize the importance of this work and how they feel this messaging will reach the students.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm honored to represent the Kenton County School District, and one of the lines that we use quite a bit in our communication for the sixth-largest district in the state of Kentucky is safety is our number-one priority, and that's a big responsibility, and it's all-encompassing. And so we have been talking about e-scooter safety within our community, with our PTOs, with our students, and I commend you because I've already seen some of your communication. I have a son that goes to Turkey Foot Middle School, and they're already starting to incorporate some of this information into their newsletters. And so I represent our district to say that we are excited to collaborate, to help communicate this important message. I was talking to several people here tonight. We all see this in our community, and we want to make our students safer, but a big part of that is bringing awareness of the situation and educating those about the responsibility of being and making smart choices. And so the one rule I live by in the Kenton County School District is that you can never get in trouble for over-communicating information. Where you fall short is when you don't communicate enough information. And so one of the things that Lauren and I was talking about is some of the ways that we can collaborate. I have a whole communication team, and we're willing to put the information in our district newsletter, in our school newsletters, and we have a social media account, we have a website, and we have a whole video team that we can work with you guys and collaborate. We've got a drone. You know, we would love to collaborate and make those kinds of videos to help educate our population, but we just thank you for this opportunity. We're excited to work with you guys and commend you on being so proactive with this important topic that impacts our community. Thank you.
From Erlanger-Elsmer, I would like to bring up Chad Molly.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I can say anything more or better than Jessica did, but I'll give it a shot. Just again, to reiterate, appreciate the opportunity. Our two organizations have had a long history of working very collaboratively and cooperatively, especially around the importance of the safety of our kids within the school district and within the city. So this is just yet another example of how we can work together on that effort. So we're very excited. This, I think these conversations started probably not long after you came on board with our Assistant Superintendent, who manages our safety programs, Mr. Matt Engel, and then a recent meeting that we had together to kind of form up the plan. Really excited about getting involved in this, really excited about the approach that we're taking in terms of educating our families, educating our youth about how to be safe while they're riding these scooters, because I don't think the scooters are going away. So, and they are, for a lot of our kids, a great form of transportation to and from school in the mornings and afternoons, and back and forth for extracurriculars and clubs and all those other things, so, but we want them to do it safely around the city. So we're all in on supporting the communication and the messaging through the platforms and ways that we have through the school district out to our families and our kids. Looking forward to some opportunities to get our kids involved in some of that messaging and giving them opportunities to be leaders in this endeavor. Again, this is, you hear a lot of talk in the state now about new assessment and accountability systems, and one of the primary focus is vibrant learning experiences. This is a vibrant learning experiences, experience for our children to be involved in, to be a part of those messaging campaigns and lead within their buildings and within their peer groups on how to be safely riding their scooters around the city. So again, just thank you guys, thank all of you for the opportunity to, again, work collaboratively and cooperatively on this very important safety initiative.
And I do want to recognize, we will be working with a nonprofit organization. Later in the presentation, I'll address what we're going to be doing with Brain Injury Alliance and KY, but I do want to recognize Lauren Ledford, who is here. She is their program coordinator. We've been working very closely with her team to establish what I'll be talking about in a few slides here of what we will be working with Brain Injury Alliance and KY on. So, without further ado, you've heard we're going to work collaboratively with everyone in our city, lots of different organizations in our schools, but what are we actually going to do when it comes to planning? So, for the scope of our project here, the problem that we're trying to solve is just the improper usage of those scooters with residents within the city, and then local and nationwide concerns. We've seen news articles of things that are happening around Northern Kentucky and Cincinnati and the United States as a whole when it comes to e-scooter usage. So we are creating a solution that is an educational public service announcement. Why education versus an ordinance creation? With e-scooters, the technology is so new, we're trying to catch up with the laws, and at the point that we're at right now, there are some Kentucky laws that are established, but it's really important for us at this moment to make sure that our residents understand the education around those laws that they can follow, but then also just how to ride those scooters safely. It's not just riding a bike or walking along the sidewalk. It's a very fast-paced vehicle, and so we want to make sure that whenever someone does get on that scooter, they're thinking of the consequences of what could happen if they weren't riding it safely. Like I said, the new legislation may create undue restrictions for our riders, and so we want to make sure that education is the priority versus creating an ordinance or a law that would restrict them. Our mission is to create community partnerships, so we've talked about here, and advocacy with our parents and our neighbors as well. I think that's one of the big points that we'll talk about here is advocacy with those parents of the riders, if they are students, and then people who are the neighbors that might see someone riding a scooter improperly, giving them the tools to be able to tell them how to ride it in a safe and effective manner. So as I've said, city and community partners are the focus with this, but you can kind of see our square that we have here of the groups we'll be working with. That includes our city departments, our Department of Public Safety, Sergeant Otten and his work that we've been doing individually, and our Public Works Department, our nonprofit partner, Brain Injury Alliance and KY, parents and neighbors of our e-scooter riders, and then our three schools within the city that we will be collaborating with. So the first step is the proclamation that you heard Mayor Fetty read today. This is declaring that the first week in November each year will be Road Safety Week. We've established this as the first week in November because it's around daylight savings time. We know that at this time, it gets darker outside, that there's not really a decrease of students riding those scooters or anyone riding those scooters. Even when the weather is bad, we see people will consistently use them because that's their mode of travel, so we wanted to make sure it's aware and a piece of education within their mind to ride safely, whether it's an e-bike, an e-scooter, a skateboard, whatever that is, ensuring that safety is a top priority during that time. We will continue to have that ongoing community engagement, so something we'll do every single year and bring this up consistently, so it's not just a one-time effort that we're doing, but focusing on each year bringing up Road Safety Week. How can we enforce that within the city? How can we educate people? And then what are the ways that we can share that on our platforms? This will be announced tomorrow, but we'll have a letter from the mayor on our news page on our website. It will just address our recommendations that we have, along with the proclamation and the importance of safety that Mayor Fetty has instituted within the city. Our school involvement and support, our representatives spoke a little bit to this, but we will be working with Erlanger-Elsmer, Kenton County Schools, and St. Henry through their newsletter. Social media, we'll be creating a social media video of our own with some of the students from Erlanger-Elsmer, having that representation from our local students, and then also doing an in-person event with St. Henry to their entire student body, so it's reaching all of the students there. It's about 600 students that we'll be able to directly impact with this education. Social media videos, we'll create our own videos that will focus on the importance of understanding how to ride safely. We don't want to have positions where we're showing people how to ride scooters improperly, so we're going to show the safe ways that they can ride those scooters, how they can navigate around the city, and the impact that that can have whenever you are a safe-traveling pedestrian. Some of our print assets, you all might have seen these if you've traveled within the city right here. We have a flyer that we will be posting, and then these street stickers. This is a photo that was taken right out here on Commonwealth. These stickers will be appearing on corners where we know people are traveling pretty consistently with those scooters. As they make those stops, there will be something very visible on the ground that shows them the recommendations that we have for riding the scooters. Our plan is to put these on intersections where we know people are traveling consistently, so that way it is a very visible thing they're seeing all the time as they're traveling throughout the city. Our nonprofit engagement, like I said previously, we'll be working with Brain Injury Alliance of NKY to host a helmet giveaway event here at the General Government Building that will be in the middle of November, where we'll be passing out helmets to people who might not have the access to them, and ensuring that we give them the resources to be able to wear that helmet properly and understand the impact if they don't. There's lots of different versions of brain injuries, and we want to make sure that we can combat those that are either scooter-focused or bike-focused, and give them the resources to be able to minimize that risk. And then finally, this is some breaking news for everybody, something that we have been working on since I've started here and something that we are very excited to introduce here in 2026. We will have an internal and external newsletter that will be going out to our own staff first as of January 1, and then as of April 1 as to our residents. So we will be promoting information through another channel that can reach you all in an easily accessible way. We are going to have a portion within that first newsletter that will be the external newsletter on April 1 that will focus specifically on Road Safety Week, bringing that up in the springtime, as we know that's when people start getting their scooters back out again, and ensuring that we can bring that messaging up again. So you all are the first people to know that we're doing a newsletter. So I want to bring up a So I want to bring up a special guest here. We have Jax Otten and Millie Otten, who are with us. Jax is going to say a few words about the importance of riding a scooter with a helmet. He wants to say how important it is to wear your helmet and then the times that you should be wearing it and why you should wear it when you're riding your scooter. And he brought his scooter with him today.
It's not an e-scooter, but this is what they like to ride around.
Do not ride a scooter without permission. Always look out for cars. Do not ride a scooter in bad weather and always wear your helmet.
Is there's tips?
So Jax was very excited to, one, wear his helmet today and show everybody how he wears it properly, also to show off his scooter, but then to share his tips with us. I think it's very important that we understand that as youth are growing up and they're seeing the impact that they can have from the adults in their lives, it's really important for us as parents and as neighbors to be advocates for e-scooter usage and especially as we focus on this educational piece. So if you all have any questions about how we're implementing this within the city, I'd be happy to discuss this after the meeting today, but I really appreciate your time in our presentation and the work of all the people that are standing up here with me today. Thank you very much.
I just want to note, Lauren's only been with us for two months. I mean, what a great hire, great job, Lauren. To our community partners, thank you so much. I love that Erlanger continues to take a proactive approach. This is a problem that every, it seems like every community is having. Nobody's quite found the silver bullet to like fix it, but I love that we're collaborating, we're bringing folks together. And Jax, back there, Otten, you killed it, man. Great job.
Yes, very good. Thank you so much, Lauren. You've exceeded all expectations. I mean, I mean, where you go from here? Can't wait to see your next project.
Mark, you kind of took some words out of my mouth. I just wanted to say how thrilled I am and so happy that we are being proactive as a community and a city on this issue. Every day goes by that I'm seeing these scooters out in the road on Dixie Highway, cutting in and out of traffic, and people are approaching me and asking me, you know, what can be done? Is there any ordinance? So I am so thrilled because the safety of our children is the utmost important. So thank you all for being proactive on this. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is comments of those other than council members. Our first one that is signed up is Jimmy Cantwell. You'd like to come to the podium. There's a little green button you press.
Great. Hello, my name's Jimmy Cantwell, and I am here on behalf of Erlanger Baptist Church and Pastor BJ Stead to remind you all and to invite you all to a couple events that we have going on this week with the churches in our association called Hope for Northern Kentucky. Our first event is going to be tomorrow night at Lloyd Memorial High School in the gymnasium, starting at 6:30 PM. Doors will open up at 6:00 AM. And this event will be, it'll be a fun event for kids and for families, for youth, for high school students, really for anyone. And this will feature a ministry called Real Encounter, which is a ministry that performs BMX and dirt bikes. And then they just share a message of hope to those in attendance. So we're really excited about that. Want to invite you all to that and remind you about that event. That's going to be followed up by an event on Sunday night at the Car Barn in Newport. If you're not familiar with that, Google it, Car Barn, it's a little old warehouse. And that event is kind of an evangelistic event called Hope for Northern Kentucky, when it will feature an evangelist by the name of Daniel Ritchie. He was born without any arms, and he just shares how he found God amidst an adversity in his life. So we want to invite you all. That starts at 6:30 PM, doors open up at 6:00. So thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Appreciate the reminder of these great events. Next individual signed in is Bill Woodside.
I've got a little handout for you all. So, good evening. My name is Bill Woodside. My wife Wendy and I have lived in Erlanger for a long time. We live on Oxford Court, and along with us tonight, we have several of our Oxford Court neighbors in attendance. The, my purpose tonight is to bring to the attention of council the street creep issue that has caused damage to our home and to request once again that Oxford Court be replaced. This has been an ongoing situation for many years. But what I think I need to do, first of all, is to explain street creep, because that is probably a term that many people are not familiar with. Oxford Court, where we live, we're at the bottom of a hill in a cul-de-sac, and the street is concrete. And the street is made up of concrete panels, two wide and probably 25 panels from the top of the street to the front of our driveway. Concrete expands and contracts. In the summer, it contracts. I'm sorry, in the winter, it contracts, and debris gets in between those cracks. And then in the summer, when it expands, there's nowhere for that street to go because it's lengthening itself because of the debris and the cracks. And over the years, the concrete panels on Oxford Court have caused our garage foundation to move out from under our house by more than an inch. Now, we've taken all the measures necessary. What you have in your packet is civil engineering reports from two different companies. The one on top of your packet really explains street creep quite well, and it does blame the fact that our foundation is moving out from under our house, blaming it on street creep. Now, the city of Erlanger has been aware of this issue for many years. I don't know what year it was, but the city of Erlanger came and chopped up the street in front of our driveway and replaced it because the street was inching up above our driveway from the pressure of being pushed. It had to, it had to go somewhere. So it not only is pushing on our driveway, which is pushing on our garage, they replaced it. As I said, I don't remember what year this was, but it was somewhere before 2004 that this, this work was done. They came and they replaced that section in front of our driveway, and they put an expansion material in between our driveway and the street, which was about a half an inch. It looked like some kind of a felt kind of substance which petrified over the years and hardened, and it became just like concrete. So that wasn't a good solution. To date, by the way, we have, we've mitigated this issue out of our own pocket. We were told the first thing we had to do was put an expansion joint in our driveway, between our driveway and garage floor, which we did. And then the city came out, and at the top of our cul-de-sac, they dug an 18-inch trench across the width of the street and filled it in with asphalt, hoping that that would act as an expansion joint to absorb the pressure from the street coming downhill. And it maybe has to a degree, but all of the concrete in the cul-de-sac is still pressing, pressing on our driveway and still pushing on our garage floor and still pushing our foundation out from under our house. Some members of city council have been aware of this. We've gotten no cooperation from the city so far. So I'll keep this brief. As I mentioned, the purpose of this is to raise awareness for people that street creep is an issue. It does exist. Just Google it. Go on your computer and Google "street creep," and you will see what this is doing to people. To date, we've paid out over $27,000 to fix and mitigate this problem that the city has been negligent in repairing. So I'm requesting reimbursement from the city for repair of our foundation, and I'm also requesting that the city replace our street. Thank you.
Just wanted to briefly say, we thank you for your comments. The city engineer has been involved in this from the beginning, and I would just say that someone from the city will be responding to you, okay?
Wendy, if you want to come up to the microphone and Wendy, just...
Okay, in 2011, I came to this podium for our neighborhood and asked would they replace the streets. We already were having problems with our streets in 2011 in Woodland Hills. I have many copies of emails that I received back from people in city council. Nobody fixed our street. They fixed every other street in our neighborhood but ours. And they just finished Kingsburg. We are the second oldest street in this subdivision. Now, there's been a little, how can I put a tension between us and city council because they have not fixed our street and because we also, if you want to know the real truth, they don't like us because we campaigned against Mayor Rouse. And once he lost and he knew it was us, that was the end of that story. So $26,000 is a heck of a lot of money when you're 77 years old and you can't work. Either one of us, we're disabled. So I not only want the house to be repaired, I want the street to be repaired, or the engineers, coal engineer, civil solutions, some other people said the same thing. It's just going to happen again. Now, you got to say in your heart, that's not fair, that they're picking on us because we had a discussion, disagreement with a former mayor. But they can't tell me any other reason why they won't fix our street. And it looks terrible. It is terrible, and it's not just our house that has damage. Both of my neighbors have damage, and it's working its way up the street. That 18 and a half inch asphalt, whatever it's supposed to be cushioned, has done nothing for us because we're on the downside of it. It only could stop some of it that's coming down the hill. In the engineer's report that you have copies of, it says it's not going to last, it's going to do it again. So before we waste all this money that we've already did so our garage and our house won't go down the hill that's in the back of our yard, we upped the money, and now we're coming to the city and asking you, we looked it up in the computer, and it says that the city of Erlanger, it's in your package, is responsible for damage if they've been negligent. Well, 15 years of coming here and asking to have the street fixed, of sending texts out, of calling people, of having people come to my house, even the mayor, and having nothing done is, that's the end. So we're here tonight, and you can tell I'm upset because it's been a long time and a lot of money, and I think we need some response. We're not going to let it go. So if you think you're just going to let us go back home and be quiet, that will never happen. And you can pass that on to Mr. Quinn, who told me that our street wasn't going to be fixed until 2048. Now, think of that. It was put in in May of 89, 1989, and it's not been fixed, and it's got holes and water comes. I don't have to go into details. Y'all know damage streets can do, but that's, I know it's enough. I could go on and on about this, but I wanted to tell the dates. So from 2011 until when they fixed the little apron in 2004, we have had nothing done. And I don't know who makes that decision, but hopefully it's going to be a positive decision made tonight. Now, you know, an election's coming next year, and I have a big mouth, I guess you figured that out already. So I'm asking you from my heart to do the right thing, but I'm not going to just sit by and do nothing if you don't. Thank you.
I can provide, thank you, Ms. Murphy. I can provide council a little bit of context here that is outside of that report. Just, I'm brand new at this. I'm not a Public Works person, but to characterize, to say we haven't done anything, I think is a little bit misconstrued. So I just want to provide a little bit more context here. Public Works, this is mainly for Council Ms. Murphy.
Well, I want to make sure it's right, because I've been lied to.
Okay, I get you. And first, we'll say that street creep is real, like this is a, this is a natural phenomenon. This is a phenomenon. This is real. Public Works repaired the issue in August of 2023. There's been no movement since then. That's what the engineer reports. Hold on.
If they told you that, that's not true, and that's been part of the problem.
Ms. Murphy, I'm just, I'm reporting to council. This is, this is, it's not a back and forth.
It's not you lying to me, I know.
Okay. Could you please turn off your microphone, just so we don't have back, feedback? Thank you. What she said was she did install the expansion joints per our city guidance that meets the current standards. Coal engineering studies were done in December '24 and July of '25. Both of those confirm that there is no movement after the city's repair. I'm explaining right now, so this is not a back and forth. I'm just, I'm giving, I'm providing council a little bit of context. Replacing, and this is important, because they asked for street to be replaced, the engineer reports are showing that replacing or overlaying the street will not fix the underlying cause of the street creep. The subdivision, and this is important as well, was built in 1988 under the old regulations that did not require expansion joints. The new rules do require that. So Public Works will continue to monitor and report any changes. They have been very, very thoughtful and very intentional and have engaged with you, as you guys have mentioned many, many times. But to say that this is the city's fault and to, you know, ask us in the manner that you are, I get that you're frustrated. Nobody likes damage to their houses, but to characterize it, to say that the city is not doing everything that... to characterize it, to say that the city is not doing everything that we can is a little bit, it's, it's tough to hear that because I don't find that to be 100% true.
What the city has done has been too little, too late. Thank you.
So, I think we appreciate your concerns.
Can we, we're going to listen to Jack for a minute? Okay. Mrs. Murphy, you're, you need to hold on, okay? Okay. Thank you. Jack, you...
So, we, you've submitted your documentation. You've made a claim. We will address through the appropriate channels, okay? Thank you all.
I wanted to thank you all from Oxford Court coming to bring this to council. It was just brought to my attention here recently. I had never heard about "street creep," but it is a real thing if you Google it. So, I just wanted everyone to know that it was just brought to my attention recently. So, I'm glad you brought it back up to council because a lot of the councils knew that had no idea this had been going on, at least for everybody to check on it. And I think you had told me that you had some damage that the engineers said had gotten worse from last November to early this year. And hopefully that's in the packet so everybody can review that as well. Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on with the agenda. We're going to move on with the agenda. All right. That concludes those signed in. All right, our mayor's report, I will make it brief. I just want to thank everybody. We had 100 seniors at the DAV national headquarters this afternoon for Thanksgiving dinner. It was a great event and I think it's one of the, the fan favorites of our year. All of our city staff comes out, general government and fire and police and public works, they come out and they serve the seniors of our community. And it's a really wonderful afternoon. So, thank you so much for those that attended and were able to serve, serve lunch. All right. Mark?
Few items. These are all outlined in a memo in your council packet, but I'll just briefly touch on them. The Erlanger Business Council schedule is out for the full year. The next one is December the 2nd at The Hive. That will be a business social. The next one will be a roundtable that is going to be held in January. I do not have that date offhand, but again, that is in your council packet and that will be located at the DAV. Secondly, this is also outlined in your memo. We have a third engine, Engine 52, that is out of service right now. It's actually in parts. This is our backup engine. We are currently using on loan the county engine right now, but we do need to repair it. We have money in our budget and two line items in the fire budget that does cover that. I am transparently over-communicating to council, just so that you all know that when we do this repair, it's going to get us very, very close to our budget. We'll probably bust through that, probably in the first quarter. That may require a budget amendment. So, no action is needed right now. I just wanted to over-communicate and let council know that. And then finally, just to touch on Mayor Fettie, a little bit, talked about the DAV today, but also wanted to note that Kim Wolking, our events planner, that was in fact her last event that she is doing. She is retiring as of tomorrow. Lauren will take the reins from Kim and do so aptly and strongly. So, I just wanted to reference Kim Wolking's 10 years, over 10 years of service to the city of Erlanger. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Jack, city attorney's report?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Any report on capital projects?
I can. Okay, capital projects. Rigler Blacktop started on Tuesday, October 28th, and will have most of the full-depth concrete repairs done at Deer Trace, Thorn Tree, and Sky Drive. And they are working on making the sidewalk ramps ADA compliant. Narrows Road, the sidewalks, that is getting very, very close. The plans are being finalized and information for easements is finished. This information will be reviewed and sent to Jack next week to prepare the paperwork. Concord Drive, I know there was some social media inquiries about this. That is a Northern Kentucky Water District project. So, we have been on top of them to make sure that they are now pushing that ball forward. It's been a little bit longer than what we like for that to get wrapped up, but just want to let council know that they are wrapping up a few housekeeping items and they are having the contractor do more street repairs. That project is probably going to get finished, the repaving or resurfacing next spring, unfortunately. So, we're getting a little bit too late in the season to do that right now. Locust Street Park is still in design, but that is closer. There are 3D renderings of the latest design for approval. SD1 project at Misty Creek, Humphrey Construction has finished with replacing the street and sidewalk sections that SD1 tore up. The Eons Dog Park is well on their way with all the storm work complete. Most of the curbs and gutter is in, half of the sidewalk is complete. First layer of blacktop will be put down tomorrow. So, that is well on its way as well. And then also related to Eons, La Grande Fence started, the fencing on Monday. And that should be complete with a fence in a few days and follow-up in the spring for painting. Any questions? I will take them and bring them to Mr. Kevin Quinn.
I don't necessarily have a question about the specific things that you said, but when you mentioned sidewalks several times, it did make me wonder, the stickers that are going to go on the sidewalks. Well, those, I think they mentioned it would go on intersections that are frequently used by scooters, but when will we start to see those?
Yep. So, some of them are out right now. I think Lauren, how many do you know? Four of them are out right now. And just for additional context, we did consult with our police department to make sure that we're putting them in the most impactful places. So, I think we'll probably pilot it, test the material, make sure it holds up a little bit, and then potentially deploy a few more.
All right, thanks, Mark. All right, reports from task forces? I don't think we've had any. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Before the August, or excuse me, October caucus meeting, the Small Business Task Force met and we reviewed the current grant pipeline since the start of the fiscal year, which was July 1. We looked closely at how much funding had already been awarded and how many projects were still in the pipeline. So, to our business community, if you are considering applying for one of our grants, now is the time to act because available funds will be exhausted likely before budget, budget season, which is a good problem to have. We are also discussing an additional grant offering to add to our initiatives and that is centered around a tax abatement opportunity. This is currently being drafted by our city attorney and we are looking forward to presenting it to council very soon. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to remind everybody, we will be back to having a beautification task force meeting on November 18th at 5:30. And, Mark, I believe you've arranged for us to go out on site to the beginning of Eons and kind of meet out there. So, I guess just watch the city site.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that arranged and scheduled. And Tyson's Parks Task Force is canceled for November. So, potentially, you know, join in more folks. And we want people to see, especially our council members, to see some of the work that's happening down there. It's, it's incredibly exciting. So, yes, we'll communicate all of that out.
Thank you. All right. Mark, back to you.
Okay. Just one bid. I'm sorry, everybody has to listen to me all night. One bid that was opened this week, that was for the pump and pump track and bike trails at Eons. That was opened on October 30. There was only one bid submitted. It did come underneath our budget number for that. And we will accept that bid and probably sign that this week. She just signed it.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, unfinished business? All right, new business? Ms. Wilson?
I would like to invite the community to come out for a meal and Thanksgiving dinner that's going to be held at First Baptist in Elsmer, Kentucky, 1107 Garvey Avenue. And this will be a free community dinner from 5:30 to 7:00 every Tuesday in November. And also, there's going to be a food distribution, fresh produce. And that would be on the 25th of November at 2 o'clock at the Florence Christian Church, 300 Main Street, Florence. And then on the 22nd, I'm sorry, I went backwards, on the 22nd at 1 a.m. at First Baptist at 1007 Garvey Avenue, Elsmer, Kentucky. And then again, on the 25th of November at 9:30 a.m., Florence Yaus Park will be passing out turkeys at 7950 Freedom Way, Florence, Kentucky. And then in December, December the 3rd at 12 p.m., Heartland Point will at 113 Socks Drive in Elsmer, Kentucky, will be passing out fresh produce. And the community is welcome. Please come out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right, any announcements? Yes. Go ahead.
I had to, they're not necessarily new business items, but items to be added to the next caucus meeting agenda. The first one is an explanation of the relationship or agreement between the city, the Eons Preserve Fund managed by Horizon Community Funds and Corporex. The second item is an explanation of Erlanger's involvement with a mural being discussed by the city of Elsmer and KYTC on Turkeyfoot Road. According to the minutes from Elsmer's last city council caucus meeting, there's been ongoing discussion about a mural on Turkeyfoot and KYTC is requiring that Erlanger and Elsmer need to agree on a design to proceed. And I'd like to know some additional details about this and how Erlanger is involved.
Okay. Any announcements? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn?
No, we got legislation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping, totally jumping ahead. But there's no announcements. Go for it, Jack.
Hi. First, we have a ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, removing a requirement that all new dwelling units must have at least one attached or detached garage within the RMF, which is the residential multifamily zone. This was recommended by PDS staff and it was also, there was testimony at a public hearing on October 2nd in front of the Kenton County Planning Commission. It was recommended at that planning commission meeting. And you can see the attachment A, which is a part of this ordinance, removes detached garages in the table 7.1 from the RMF zone. This is a first read.
All right. Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance?
All right, next, we have an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Erlanger, County of Kenton, changing an area of approximately 45.03 acres located on the north side of Dolwick Drive between Crescent Springs Road to the east and Turfway Road to the west, approximately one mile west of Crescent Springs Road in Erlanger, from BP Business Park Zone to RMF, multifamily residential zone. This also was recommended by PDS staff. It went in front of the Kenton County Planning Commission for a public hearing on October 2nd, 2025. And it is recommended primarily because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the other identified enumerated areas in A through F. This also is a first reading.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance, please. All right. Now, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Fields, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. Have a good evening.